Good morning and welcome to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM Tuesday, August the 2nd, 2011. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda. Motion by Mr. Auletta, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The first item on the agenda this morning is a presentation of a certificate of achievement, and I'd like to ask if we have Mackenzie Hudgens in the room. Okay? I'm gonna put you on the spot. If you'll come stand in front of the podium so everybody can see you, I'd like to read the certificate of achievement and then present that to you. This certificate is awarded to Mackenzie Hudgens in recognition of outstanding service to your country through your military and academic training at the prestigious West Point Military Academy where you have consistently excelled both academically and militarily. We commend you for your outstanding achievement of being the only cadet out of a class of thirteen hundred and eighty-four to be selected to conduct research at the U.S. Army Research Laboratory in Champaign, Illinois, and we wish you continued success with your plans to pursue a career as a doctor in the U.S. Army. And if y'all would join me, let's give her a hand. Would you step over here? We always welcome the opportunity to recognize our outstanding young people in Henry County. Moving on to social services, the first item is a resolution requesting award of a bid to purchase a 2012 Model 32 passenger bus. Our presenter is David Williamson, Transit Director, Exhibit Number One. Good morning.
Good morning. We are requesting permission to purchase a new bus. The thirty, the county has one 30-passenger bus that we use at the current time. There's a 1997 bus that, quite honestly, has seen better days. Bids were submitted through the purchasing department for our new bus, which will meet the ADA, American Disabilities Act requirements, and the federal requirements. Requests were sent to five vendors and also listed on the website, the ACCG website. Two bids were submitted, and there's a bid tab there for your comparison. The lowest bid was from International Bus Group located in College Park, Georgia. It is recommended that we purchase an Apollo bus made by Gavell with a five-year warranty at a price of $128,739. This is an 80/20 match with the Federal Transit Administration. Local match would be $25,748.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
I have one, Chair.
Mr. Stamey?
Have you put the match in your budget this time?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions? You have before you a resolution awarding the bid to International Bus Group in a total amount of $128,739, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. The next item is a resolution requesting authorization to accept the FY 2012 GDOT Section 5311 Rural Transportation Transit Operating Assistance Grant, and that's gonna be Exhibit Number Two.
Yes, ma'am. We have been a participant in the rural transportation program with GDOT for the past 21 years. It's an excellent program. It provides transportation to the, to the community here in Henry County. This year, we were able to receive an increase in our reimbursement. It's gonna be, this is a 16% increase over FY 2011, and the current amount for, is $403,302 from GDOT, and then the local portion is $423,303, which is the local match, which is also in our budget for this year.
Does any board member have a question pertaining to this item? Mr. Auletta?
For Mr. Bush, was, or yourself, I guess, the, since we usually don't know what the grants are gonna be when the budget was done, was this anticipated as a 16% increase, or was this a windfall, if you would, to us?
This would be a windfall to us.
Okay. Any idea what that is at this time? No? Okay. At least it's a windfall.
Yeah, I think it is one of those things where it depends on the number of rides and things like that to do.
Yes.
So it's, it's one of those, we know that the percentage will be bigger, or we'll get more money, but we don't know, it depends on the actual participation, I guess.
Correct.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? And if not, you have before you a resolution agreeing to accept the GDOT 5311 Transportation Transit Operating Assistance Grant, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Auletta, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Moving on to planning and zoning, the first item, well, the only item actually under planning and zoning, is a resolution requesting authorization to receive reimbursement funds from the Georgia EPD Hazardous Waste Trust Fund and to execute an agreement governing expenditures for state and local government costs. Our presenter is Michael Harris, Planning and Zoning Services Division Director, Exhibit Number Three. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, members of the board. Back in March of 2010, the county submitted a request for some of reimbursement for expenses that have been incurred at the Wendy Hill, at the West Asbury landfill. We've done this in past years. I think to date, we've received three previous reimbursements, and this is another segment. It typically takes a long time for them to process, to go back through, review our application, and pleased to announce that we have been awarded $197,440.26 in eligible reimbursement costs. It's important to note that there are no matching funds associated with this, as this is a reimbursement of fees and costs that we've already incurred. So right now, we're asking board to authorize staff to move forward with the necessary paperwork to submit back to EPD so we can secure the funds.
Does any board member have a question pertaining to this item? Mr. Holder?
Mr. Harris, is this an annual cost to maintain that landfill?
This was not. This was principally associated with the soil vapor extraction system that we installed a few years ago. Most of those costs, as it was for the remediation of the landfill per a directive from EPD, we're under mandate to do something to address the soil vapor issue we had out there. So went through, contracted with Golden Associates, and the majority of those costs were eligible for reimbursement. So this was principally associated with that, with that item.
That's, that's basic, almost $200,000. What does it cost to maintain those landfills annually? Do you have a number on this?
I don't have the exact, I may defer to Terry.
We spend about, between Wendy Hill and West Asbury, in monitoring, methane monitoring, and groundwater monitoring, just paying consultants, sending those reports to them, about $44,000, $45,000. We'll probably spend $5,000 to $10,000 in maintenance fees, power bills, and things like that to operate those SVE systems. So we're roughly, I would guess, $55,000 a year.
And I think it's important that the public know that that's what it's costing us to maintain a landfill that's been closed for so many years, and just how costly landfills are, not only to operate, but to monitor and maintain after once closed. So that's the reason for my comment.
That does not include the, like, we have to mow it twice a year. That's done out of the DOT, so that's just absorbed in that. So there's some other type costs that are not direct costs, that's not in that budget. But, so there is a few other things.
Thank you.
Mr. Auletta?
Since this is March of 10, a couple of questions. Since that date, it sounds like based on the type of reimbursement, there haven't been any similar type of expenses that are reimbursable?
Not similar to what we submitted for. Again, that was for a particular unit, the soil vapor extraction unit. We haven't done to do anything else of that magnitude since that time, no.
Okay. The way you're saying it, it's almost like, is there anything that is, has been spent that is reimbursable that we're trying to get money back on since March of 10?
Right. You know, what we've done over the last four or five years, kind of working in conjunction with, with our Department of Transportation, every couple of years, we go back through and we look and assess what, what qualifies as eligible costs. And some of those things are, some of those annual inspections, some of those reports, they are. So over the last three, four years, we've been mindful to make it a point to always go back and pursue this grant as reimbursement, and we've been fairly successful over the, over the years. We'll continue to do that. They, probably next year, we'll go back through and continue to keep a track of all of our costs incurred, all of our invoices, all of our receipts that we've received, and once we get to that point where, again, next year, I think it's due in March, we'll move forward with submitting another application. It just, it takes time to go through there, the EPD system.
And we just finished Fiscal 11.
Mm-hmm.
Then the question is, is there, was there anything we spent money on in Fiscal 11 that we should be requesting reimbursement on now as opposed to waiting until Fiscal 12 is over with?
They have set deadlines as far as when you, when you can submit, and so typically, when that time, when that timeframe comes around, I think it's in, again, March, April, February, March, we'll back, we'll back through and make an assessment and say, find out how many eligible costs we have accumulated during that timeframe.
So that would've been March of 11? So we didn't file for anything in March of 11?
We had not, no.
Okay. Then, then I guess this, the other, last question is, is this again another windfall, or was this budgeted to be coming back since these were expended back in 10?
This was not budgeted. This is, we'll have to go back, I guess. We could do it now, if this is a resolution to, to amend our budget, to increase our budget by this $200,000, or we can bring it back to you at a later date and do the increase to the budget, because this is a revenue that was not budgeted.
Right. So then, yeah, when you say increase the budget, not in expenditures, but in income that weren't expected.
Right, for revenues.
So we have $200,000. Again, I call it windfall in my terminology.
Yes, sir.
We had budgeted for the expenditure, but again, we couldn't accurately budget for the revenue, because again, we're submitting for a grant.
But the expenditure was?
Not knowing what that, what the actual amount is going to be.
But the expenditure occurred in, prior to March of 10?
That's correct.
Which means it was expense, it was done, cash out, and everything else. So anything coming in now, there's no associated expenditures with, so it's a pure pickup in income for the, for the county.
Well, with the exception of what DOT spends on a regular basis for their maintenance, so yeah.
Get with Terry and give him straight now.
Trying to help him out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution to accept the funds from EPD's Hazardous Waste Trust Fund, and I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Auletta, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to public safety, the first item is a resolution requesting authorization to impose a 911 prepaid wireless charge. Our presenter is Ms. Susan Clegg, Emergency Communications, Exhibit Number Four. Good morning.
Good morning. This item, prepaid wireless, these funds are charged when someone actually has, purchases a prepaid plan with a wireless provider. These charges, these have been, being charged, but the money has been going to the state rather than the local counties that actually provide the 911 service. So a House bill was passed, House Bill 256. This will allow the county to pass a resolution, and then we will have to file that resolution with the state, and that way, when the monies are collected, they will be dispersed to the counties where the 911, the person with the service lives. So that's what this is about. These monies will be sent annually, once a year, and this takes effect, takes effect January 1st, 2012.
Do you have an estimate of about how much that's going to be?
We don't. You know, we never collected it before this way, so there's no way to know exactly. It is 75 cents per purchase, or per, per item purchased, so we have no way of knowing exactly how much it's gonna be.
Does any board member have a question or comment? Mr. Holmes?
I have a question. Do these funds go into our general budget? Maybe that's a question.
They will go into an emergency, there's a fund already set up, and that's where our 911 and wireless fees go. This will also go into that fund, and it will be used to support the 911 center. It can be used for salaries, you know, leasing, day-to-day activity cost is what it will support for the 911 center.
Mr. Holder?
Susan, will these funds be dispersed in a similar fashion to, like sales tax are today?
It will, you know, this is sort of new to us, and we don't really know exactly how it's gonna be dispersed, other than, you know, if, if we don't have a resolution in place, we will not get the funds. And so, and once a year is when it will come in, and, you know, once we get through the first year to see exactly how it's gonna work, but that's how it will be.
Any other questions? Mr. Auletta?
Are any of the counties using our 911 service?
Ours?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
No.
Anyone else? You have before you a resolution imposing the 911 charge on prepaid wireless service, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting authorization to accept funds to furnish a portion of an emergency support function room, and that's Exhibit Number Five.
Okay. Under the umbrella of the National Incident Management, there are 15 emergency support functions. When we move into our new facility, we're planning to have some offices for, for these, the people that are actually responsible for these functions. Transportation, communications, public works, logistics are just some of those functions that fall under that umbrella. City of Stockbridge wants to donate $5,000 for one of those emergency support function offices, and that money would be used to furnish that office with, you know, computers, furniture, whatever we need in that, in that office.
Does any board member have a question pertaining to this? Mr. Bowman?
Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. I need the other cities to step up to the table.
Not yet, but we do anticipate that they will. You know, Stockbridge is the first one, but we've had a lot of feedback, and we do anticipate that they will.
Great. Thank you. That's all.
Mr. Auletta?
Does this $5,000 figure get computed considering the cost of the services? This seems like a very nominal fee, and just recently, I think we spent a half a million dollars to Stockbridge for something in the lease over there, that lease that we had. So I was wondering, from a fair share and whatever else, how is this, this determined to be a fair share figure?
It's voluntary, so.
Voluntary, so they don't even have to give us anything?
They came up with this amount to give.
Contribution.
Contribution, I see.
Commission.
Typical two contribution accounts, is that right? Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. If not, you have a resolution before you accepting the donation in the amount of $5,000 from the City of Stockbridge. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting approval to lease space on the radio tower located at 680 Fairview Road, and that's going to be Exhibit Number Six.
Snapping Shoals E&amp;C currently leases space on our tower on Old Jackson Road, and that covers the south end for them fairly well. They wanted to lease space on a tower at the north end of the county to, to cover that area. We have a, a radio tower at our, what we call Site Six, but it's on East Fairview Road at our Fire Station Six. So they requested to lease space there. They would put, actually put up two antennas, one receive antenna, one transmit antenna, and a base station. They would not have access to our facility. The, the base station would be housed in a box outside the fence area. They would be responsible for installation costs, any maintenance cost for those antennas and for that control station. They operate on a VHF system. Ours is an 800 trunk system, so there's no interference possible with those two different frequencies. The cost that we charge them now for Old Jackson is $12,000 a year, and that's what we're asking the cost be for, for this location would be $12,000 a year.
And I noted that the term of the, of the lease agreement is one year?
Yes, one year.
Any questions or comments pertaining to this item? If not, you have a resolution before you approving the lease between Snapping Shoals and Henry County. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. This is, actually should be Susan Clegg Meeting Day. You've got, you've got most of the items.
It appears that way, doesn't it? We have a lot.
You do. The next item is a resolution requesting authorization to accept funds related to the Hazard Mitigation Plan with GMA and Federal Emergency Management Agency, and that's Exhibit Number Seven.
Okay. We all required to have a hazard mitigation plan in place, and every five years, we have to go back and update that hazard mitigation plan. This is a grant for $24,000 that we match with $8,000. The match is going to be, we come to a, like, a, an average hourly cost for labor, and that's what we use when we have these meetings. So anyone in the county that attends these meetings that we're going to have, takes part in this planning, we have actual time sheets that they fill out, and so these hours will be submitted, and that will be our $8,000 match. Basically, we look at our past plan, reassess it, see if there's any changes or anything that we need to address. It, it reduces or eliminates the long-term risk of, to life and property when we do have a disaster. And in mitigation, we just try to, to look and see what we think are ways that we can mitigate those damages and then put in, put that into place in our plan.
Does any board member have a question pertaining to this item? If not, you have a resolution before you that's accepting funding related to the Hazard Mitigation Plan with GMA and FEMA, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Auletta to approve, and a second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting award of a bid to purchase a new logging recorder system, and that's gonna be Exhibit Number Eight.
When we move into our new facility, our current logging recorder system, we could not add positions to it. So we, we're going to add eight dispatch positions to the new facility. So we went out to bid, we went through the bid process, and we, excuse me, okay, we placed systems, submitted a proposal that met all of our specifications. One of the main specifications we had, we upgraded the switch to our radio system last fiscal year, and we had to have a logging recorder system that, that could interface with that switch. But, but replay met all of our specifications at the cost of $101,284, and we're requesting that they be awarded the bid.
Does any board member have a question pertaining to this item? Mr. Auletta?
Where is this budgeted in this year's budget?
This is budgeted in the Capital Projects Fund. We did a lease purchase.
It's last year, and this was some of the items for the new E-911 center that was sitting in that budget. So it is in the Capital Projects budget currently.
So this was anticipated as one of the items for which that was gonna be needed?
And this fire truck.
And some of the E-911 stuff for the new building.
We're just starting right now on the renovation, I guess, of that building and land and whatever else, and I guess my question is, do we know all the items? Has there been a list of items that are gonna have to be upgraded? Is this gonna be a trickle effect of, here's one this month, and next month, another item? Or do we have everything that we know we're gonna need to?
We've identified everything that we're going to have to have as far as upgrade within the system itself. I've got another item on the agenda today. So, you know, by the time the, the building is completed, and we want to get everybody on board now so that we can meet with the build, the, you know, the contractors, builders, whoever we need to meet with so that everybody can coordinate because of electrical wiring and such, that some of these are gonna have to, to, to know, you know, so.
So the items you're bringing up today are the items that should take care of the ability to move that building forward?
Right.
And without continuing every month or so to have another upgrade that's required, or need more capital to?
No. The, the only upgrades would be our phone system, and then, like I said, the, the furniture today, the logging recorder today, and that, you know, that would be all.
Okay.
And we've, you know, we've, we've anticipated and we know what we're gonna have to upgrade.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Susan, Don had anticipated this coming on for quite some time, and he was able to secure some furniture from the federal building downtown.
Yes.
Pennies on the dollar, so there's a lot of furniture already being bought, if not been donated for that new facilities.
Yeah, we do. We've, we've got furniture for our training facility, we have office furniture chairs, so we've, we have accumulated a lot to go into this, this new facility.
I think Don said even when they were down there picking it up, that they, things that they had not purchased, they said, just take what you need. They wanted to get it out of the building.
Yes.
So we ended up getting more than he actually paid for.
We did. I think we've also given some of that to other departments as well.
And some of it's like? Some of it's like brand new?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? If not, you have before you a resolution awarding the purchase of the new logging recorder system to replace systems in the amount of $101,284, and I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Stamey is there, second? Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting award of a bid to purchase new dispatch console furniture, and that's Exhibit Number Nine.
As I stated earlier, we are going to add eight dispatch positions to the new facility. This console furniture is what the dispatch equipment is housed in. So we have, like, five monitors at each station, we have the, where they dispatch the units, we have a CAD system where they run the GCIC and CIC information. So we did go through a bid process on this. We only had one proposal, which was one, was from Watson Furniture. They meet all of our specifications. In fact, that's what we have in place now is Watson. So it, the total cost is $112,384.05, and this, this too is under capital lease, right, Mike?
Anyone else question? Mr. Auletta?
Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry. You mentioned that the console itself's going from 10 to 18 positions. That's for future expansion. We're not hiring eight people to, eight more dispatchers?
It's for future expansion, but even now, with 10 positions, if we have a weather situation, or if the police department has run something like Clickit or Ticket, roadblocks that type, we have to take them off of their normal working talk group and bring another dispatcher in to strictly work that. So we are getting tight even now. But we do, some of it is for future growth, some of it will be, be used when we moved in, when we do move in.
The reason I'm asking is that we just went through a very tight budget, and if I'm mistaken, we didn't really add any people to anybody's departments, some cuts, and I just, that's one I see going from 10 to 18.
Right.
That we all understand we're not hiring more people or taking a budget that's been set and hiring more people now after the fact. So I understand what you're saying.
No, when we have, right, when we have to have additional people, we just bring them in from our current base, so, you know, but we're not planning on hiring anyone right now, so.
Are there any other questions? If not, you have before you a resolution authorizing the purchase of the console furniture in the amount of $112,384.05. in the amount of $112,384.05. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Holder. Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item is a resolution awarding a bid to purchase direct thermal printers and accessories, and our presenter is Clark Rayner, Director of Technology Services, Exhibit Number Ten.
Good morning. This is a bid that went out for printers. These are for, meant for the patrol cars. The bid was for 75 printers. We had eight respondents to the bid award, and one of the things about the response, we asked for not only the printers themselves, but also enough paper to supply the first six months or so of operation for the police department, to make sure that they had all the necessary consumables they need. Because those are recurring charges that will supplant what we're now paying for the carbon copy tickets that they're currently purchasing, I believe that by the time we get through this initial bunch of paper, the police department will have to then begin buying thermal paper rather than the carbon copy tickets that are used today. And because there was a difference in price in some of the respondents for the paper itself, we're asking that we divide this up in between the actual printers themselves, and so that we get the best deal on the printers, and then also award the paper to the lowest respondent better for the paper as well. In the resolution, I had one question about the way that this was put together. I just want to make sure that in the future that we're going to be able to purchase off of this, this award. I think it was fairly limited in the way the resolution was put together by the purchasing department. Because we actually, we requested for a bid on 75 printers. We've gone through an extensive six-month process choosing a printer and going through the bid process. We would really like to be able to use this same process coming back forward as we begin to outfit the remaining vehicles within the police department and a few in the sheriff's department as well.
So, somewhere in the resolution, we need to add with no fixed quantities in there?
We can do that.
Okay.
If you can make that amendment, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Mr. Stamey?
Mr. Bush, was this a budget on?
Yeah, sorry about that. This is actually being paid for out of 2008 Omnibus Appropriations Bill that's been administered by the cops grant folks at the federal level.
How much was that total grant? Do you remember?
About $465,000. We have roughly $106,000 left in the grant. And so, actually, the bids came in a good bit less than what we were planning on, that's why we shot, we're shooting for the 75 total, and it's, I believe we're actually going to have enough money to go ahead and get all the police cars outfitted with the appropriate equipment.
Very good. Mr. Alata?
I'm probably reading this wrong, but just in case, ScanTech, the total appears to be $29,545, and CDWG is 32?
I don't know if you noticed on, it's very hard to see there.
I've got a copy here, that's where I'm picking it up from, so that's.
Okay. That's, the orange items were actually non-comparable items. Those are the mounts, specific to the vehicles, that we're going to make those work for the police. That's one of the things that took us a long time to determine the correct type of printer and the mounting equipment, and ScanTech did not actually quote the correct type of equipment. They, it's just not going to work.
So, the equipment?
I would say they're non-responsive.
The equipment that they did offer is not going to work, you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It's not that it can be substituted?
It was different equipment than what was asked for.
Can't be substituted because of the quality and what it does?
It can't, and it really has to do with the amount of space in the vehicle, officer safety, how well those things are attached. Officer gets in a wreck, and a printer goes flying along with the mounting equipment, which is steel, we have to, you know, those are all considerations that we have to take into account when you deal with inside of an officer's vehicle.
Any other questions? If not, there's a resolution before you awarding a split bid between CDWG Government and Partech Paper Solutions with no fixed quantities added into that resolution, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Alata, all in favor. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item is a resolution requesting approval of the license for space agreement for National Night Out 2011. Our presenter is Jason Duffy, and that's Exhibit Number 11. Good morning.
Thank you. I believe everybody's familiar with National Night Out. I believe it's a positive event that we put on here at the county. This will be my seventh year I put it on, and there's probably a couple thousand people that come to this event there at the Target Parking Lot. As a matter of fact, we actually piggyback off our district, Mr. Holmes' district up there to do one back a few months ago. Have nothing but positive reactions. We have a great relationship with the management, which we kind of just go by real well, and for public safety, I mean, it's a great interaction with public safety, just not law enforcement, but all public safety, and also everybody in the county to meet and greet those that live in the community. And so, I'm just asking the county to approve it again.
Does any board member have a question or comment?
Officer Duffy, I want to say thank you for the event that you put on in Fairview area. That event went a long way towards creating better relationships between the community and our safety and law enforcement department, and went a long way towards making people in our community feel safe and protected as well. So, again, I want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution authorizing the license for space agreement, and I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to SPOS, we have a resolution approving authorization to execute the Erosion, Sedimentation, and Pollution Control Plan and Comprehensive Monitoring Statement on All Current SPOS-Funded Transportation Projects. Our presenter is Rocky Romero, SPOS Transportation Projects Director, Exhibit Number 12. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members. SPOS is responsible to submit the Erosion, Sedimentation, Pollution Control Plan and the Comprehensive Monitoring Plan Statement to EPD on all current SPOS-funded transportation projects. It is required by EPD that the owner or the designated to execute the statement as shown on the attachment, have attached on your, on the resolution a copy of what an Erosion Control Plan's cover sheet looks like and the statement.
It's right here at the bottom of the sheet.
The engineer of record also signs this statement, and that's the one above.
Right here. As well, he would have to put his stamp, P E stamp, and also his Level Two certification for erosion.
So, we're requesting the board to grant Henry County SPOS Transportation Project Director, or myself, the authority to execute this Erosion, Sedimentation, and Pollution Control Plan Comprehensive Monitoring Plan Statement, it's pretty long, on all current, or all current SPOS-funded transportation projects. And this would expedite, of course, the chairman could sign, but if the chairman is not in town, it would definitely expedite the process, as well as we also have to provide a full set of plans to EPD and also a fee that goes involved with this, too.
It'd be good if they could shorten the name of what this is.
It's basically an erosion plan.
And this is done on every project?
This is something new. This statement was not there. We've been, we've been doing plans since I've been with the county, we've been always doing erosion plans, but this is something new. Also, the Level Two, that's probably about four, five years old, the part where the engineer had to also stamp, have the quality take a course and test for the erosion classes. But the statement where the owner certifies that the plan has been designed by a professional engineer, that's something new.
Okay, and Butch Oliver will continue to be the compliance officer on all of these projects?
We are, and also, if you look on the plans, I'm also the.
There's 24 hours contract.
So, my cell number is there, too, so if something happens, EPD has this on record, so if they can get ahold of the contractor, they'll be calling me myself.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution, and I will entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting approval of a supplemental agreement for the design of Fairview Road Anvil Block Road Widening Project, and that's Exhibit Number 13.
Fairview Road Anvil Block Road Widening is a designated SPOS, designated SPOS III Transportation Project. Due to design changes to that landscape and street lighting, enhanced pedestrian safety, and increased the project length, this includes the Westpanola Panola Realignment and Signalization. A supplemental agreement for Kimberly-Horn &amp; Associates in the amount of $119,150 is requested. Funding for the supplemental agreement, it is available in our current project budget.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
Please.
Mr. Holder?
$119,000 additional must have been a complete change, or quite a change in the plan?
It is quite a change. We were into preliminary plans, and we added, we didn't have bike lanes on the regional concept or on the regional design, and we end up adding a multi-use sidewalk, which is basically a 10-foot wide concrete sidewalk for pedestrian and bicycle, as well as landscaping the medians, because this is going to be a divided highway, just like Eagles Landing or Jonesboro Road. So, we have also gone ahead and included the design for the landscaping in those areas, as well as we have included Westpanola Realignment, also a signalization. There was no median opening in that area where Westpanola is going to come to, so those design changes that had to be done.
We did what we did want. We did a freeway running through our community. We wanted to create an environment where people can gather, and they can do commerce, and they can feel comfortable with going onto Fairview Road. We wanted to create a health and wellness community. I mean, we're working with a company called Exegence right now. They're currently working with the Development Authority. We're looking to provide some positive incentives to attract them to our community, to increase our commercial tax base for the entire county. With that said, if we're able to pull that off, we'll be looking at an urgent care center, ambulatory center, medical office buildings on Fairview Road, and the beautification and multi-use sidewalks will do nothing but, won't do anything but complement what the proposed project that may be coming to our community. So, I hope I have all your support with this.
How far from the edge of payment will the multipurpose lanes be?
It's probably, of course, you're going to have curb and gutter, and there's going to be a strip, probably about two feet of grass, and then that's, next to that, there'll be the 10-foot line, the 10-foot section for the multi-use.
So, within three to four feet of the traffic is where the people will be walking and bikes?
It will be no different from Eagles Landing or any other Hudson Bridge. You're looking at speed limits of 45, you know, this is not a high-speed road by any means.
Any other questions? Mr. Bowman?
The change order is 25% of the total cost, so total cost was $435,000, and the change order is $120,000. Was that, so basically, the changes are enhancements?
Enhancements, also a lot of, of course, we were into preliminary, past preliminary plans when we made these changes, so a lot of the drainage, all that had to be redone because of the multi-use.
So, the $400,000 was preliminary?
That's preliminary, this surveying, also, this $119 also includes surveying on the Westpanola, which that was not part of the regional. So, there's a lot of, quite a bit, it's over quarter of a mile of surveying, close to half a mile, thereabouts. So, this is include all that, doing flats for those areas that we didn't have included previously. Also, let's see, also the signalization, we're going to, the way we're going to design this, we're going to use master arms instead of using just your regular concrete poles. So, it's beautification for the area, it's going to definitely look completely different from any other area, I would think, that the county has currently.
And it's covered under your SPOS, you have it in the budget, so you're okay?
We have it, we have the budget for it, sir.
Mr. Holder?
One final question, and I guess if there's a 25% increase in the design cost for the enhancements that are going to be on the road, what does this do to the project cost, and can it stay within the budget for that?
One of the things, we shortened the project, because there was, of course, there was no, we couldn't afford everything, so. We have met with Commissioner Holmes, and he agrees that we're going to narrow the scope of the project.
Okay.
I may be the lone dissenting voice on the board that have a little different perspective on some of these projects. Really, we should be looking at all of our roads, especially those in the heavily traveled corridors, making them more aesthetically appealing. It enhances your community, as Mr. Holmes says, and when you give a little more thought to the sidewalks, even stamped concrete or stained concrete and landscaping enhancements, it really changes the whole feel, and it just looks a lot better, and I think it keeps your values higher as well.
It does, and we started doing some, like, we've done some stamped concrete on District Two, on Hudson Bridge, and we'll have some stamped on Eagles Landing, but the portion of the landscaping and the street lights, that's something that we have not done before. But I think this area specifically, the Fairview, and it's only a portion of the road that we're going to be putting all this, the light fixtures, is very, very heavily commercial. There's a lot of commercial in that area, so street lights will definitely, you know, you will not put street lights on Inslee because there's nothing now there, but someplace like Fairview Road, the section where all the community, the heavy commercial places is located, it makes sense.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Bowman?
Eagles Landing Parkway, the Property Owners Association have already engaged with several design in order to do landscape, lighting, and some other things. They're actually paying for that, the Property Owners Association. I know that I have met on a number of occasions with them, as well as our county managers met with them, so there are some things that, you know, that we're currently doing in some of these areas to enhance those areas, because that corridor is going to be very busy going down through there, and so there's some things that are on the, you know, that'll be coming back before us that are on the horizon that will make those look good, so.
I know some communities have noted that the landscaping and different things like that also is a speed control, because people tend to drive slower in those areas than they would if it was just a thoroughfare with nothing along either side.
I think the issue we're having, though, with these current economic times, is not as much in putting it in as in, as in taking care of it, and the maintenance of it. I noticed at Willow Road, I come that way a lot coming to our meetings, and it's a beautiful median that had a lot of planting and stuff in there, and now it's super overgrown with weeds, and a lot of the stuff that was put in is probably dying off, but obviously, we don't have the money to go take care of it.
One thing we need to maybe look at that we haven't done any, to my knowledge, here in the county, are CIDs, the Community Improvement Districts, and that's where you do get a group of businesses or homeowners associations that come together and assess on themselves a certain fee to maintain, do maintenance and things like that, and I think, you know, it's been very successful on the north side, and that's something we probably need to explore a little bit more here as well. If there's no other questions or comments pertaining to this item, Mr. Holmes, I'll look to you for a motion on the approval of the supplemental agreement. Have a motion to approve, is there a second? Second by Mr. Alata, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting approval of a supplemental agreement for the signalization for the King Mill Road at State Route 42 Road Project, and that's Exhibit Number 14.
Yes, I kind of mentioned this one briefly yesterday, and as everybody knows, King Mill Road at State Route Forty-two is a designated SPOS III transportation project. King Mill Road at State Route Forty-two is currently under construction. At the time the project was bid out, GDOT did not approve the traffic signal. Due to the volume of traffic at the intersection of Henry County, resumated a request to GDOT to install a traffic signal and received approval on June eighth of this year. Staff request an approval of supplemental agreement for Lambert Sand and Gravel Corporation in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-four cents for the signalization.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, Mr. Holder, this lies in your district, and I'll look to you for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Before I make the motion, Rocky, did you bring this morning the numbers that we discussed yesterday about those other two projects? If you did, I'd like for you to get the clerk so that she could distribute a copy to each board member.
I did, sir. On the Harris Drive at State Route Forty-two, Kenny's Plus spent three hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars, forty-one cents. GDOT, our federal cost, was three hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty with eighty-eight cents. On the racetrack at eighty-one, Henry Kenny's Plus spent six hundred and five dollars, sorry, six hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-nine cents construction for racetrack at eighty-one, it was one million, three hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-four cents.
Okay, do those numbers again, six hundred thousand versus?
Six hundred and five thousand, roughly, versus one point three.
Okay. Another good example, and I'd like for each board member to have a copy of those. With that, Madam Chairman, I move to approve the resolution for the signalization of King Mill and Highway Forty-two in award to Lambert Sand and Gravel.
Have a motion to approve, second by Mr. Bowman, all in. Mr. Stane?
So the state's not participating on the signal, correct?
This particular project, it is one hundred percent SPOS. Remember, that is a little bit south of McDonald's.
I know, but at one time, they were, we had submitted many plans to get approved to them to participate on the light, correct?
Not on this one.
I thought they turned us down the first time.
Yes, but not, never been.
They turned us down on the signal, period, because they wouldn't warrant it.
We did have Whirlpool money, correct?
Whirlpool money, we don't have yet, I believe, but.
We have a request.
There's a request in, in intersection improvement and signalization. Whirlpool had put up two hundred thousand dollars of the one point four to six million dollars that the intersection improvement cost.
Would it have been less of a cost and certainly more convenient for our citizens had this been done at the time of construction?
Safer, more convenient, everything, but we couldn't because you were not allowed to install a signal at our cost.
That's the point I was going to make, too, because we get called up, and I know the citizens want to see something done, just like Highway eighty-one in Lake Dow. When are y'all turning the signal on? Are you going to wait for somebody else to get killed? We have this, we have this thing we have to go through, this process that we have to go through with GDOT, and it just, it's like you got this stuff trying to move through the pipeline, and it gets bottlenecked there, and you're trying to push to get these things done. And it looks bad for us because it looks like we're not doing our job, or we're making foolish decisions, when in fact, we're waiting on someone else to allow us to do what we know needs to be done for our citizens. So I just wanted to follow up with a comment.
Well, and also, Chairman, the questions that I've had to answer from citizens in this area, this road has been sitting for almost a year now, it's barricaded. Well, why have we spent all that money and we're not even using it? Hasn't been a vehicle on it? Well, hopefully this will do it, and we're looking at, what, three more months, though, even from this date?
Yeah.
About three months before we can even get the equipment and get it operational. So it does look bad on us, and we have not held this process up, as we talked about yesterday, with railroad filing an injunction, the GDOT holding us up. Various things have put this project over two years in making, and it looks bad. It really looks bad, because we haven't done our job, when in fact, that is a state route. They're not funding it, but the improvements were funded by the county, but yet we couldn't continue without their approval.
All right, all in favor of the motion? Carries five zero. The next item is a resolution approval of an indemnity agreement with the United States Surety Company, and that's exhibit number fifteen.
Yes, since the Mill Road and Collins Drive are designated SPOS III transportation projects that were awarded to Commincide Development in two thousand and nine, both projects are substantially completed with exception of permanent grassing. Commincide Development has a number of claims for work that was performed and not paid to subcontractors for these projects. An indemnity agreement between the United States Surety Company and Henry County is needed in order for the surety to pay all contract funds, including without limitation retainage amounts, claims earned but unpaid contract monies, and unearned contract monies in connection with common performance of the bonded projects. The board would approve this agreement between the United States Surety and Henry County. We do have the enough money, the monies, the funds for this, and we would have to cut the checks to the surety, and the surety will be paying the subs for this project. I will take any questions.
Mr. Alletta?
Basically, I believe your position here is that the subcontractors would have to file a claim against the surety, isn't that correct?
They have.
And so then, as a result, the surety is now in play, and as a result of them being in play, they're asking us to take what monies are still due to our contractor to give them the money to pay these, under their obligation of the surety that we've gotten.
That is correct, and we do have a performance and payment bonds on all contracts, and this is actually the first time that we've seen this or this happens.
Chairman, and this particular agreement protects Henry County, because discussing the issue with the finance director, he's started in progress, so that if we start making payments to another entity, that Collins will come back and claim that the money was due to them, so I had the surety company.
Prepare an indemnification agreement that will protect the county from any and all claims that the contractor may have against us, so this agreement actually protects us in that event.
And both projects are complete. Like I mentioned, the only thing left is the permanent grass to grow, and for some reason, other projects have grass, and these two don't, so.
And you're withholding some money to complete that before you?
That is correct. We are withholding monies for that, so we will be, if approved, we'll be making payments to the surety, but we're still, we're still going to be withholding money for both projects for grassing.
And that's covered in the agreement, Madam Attorney?
The agreement that we issued when the bid was awarded has all of those retainage amounts in there, so that agreement will still be in place, it's just that the surety company now stands in the shoes of the contractor, so.
If they're standing in the shoes, are they the one responsible to finish the grassing, or can we complete it with old money? How is the agreement going to cover us?
The subs that we have still on board will be required to complete the work, and the payment will be made to the surety to pay those subs. So I'm not sure if Rocky, the subs are already started the work, are you going to use those or some new ones? I'm not sure.
On this case, they did their, most of their grassing, so we'll have to check with the sureties, unless they come back and finish themselves the grassing, if not, the grassing, if not, we'll have to pay somebody to do it, and we'll have to get with the surety on that.
If we pay someone else to do it, then of course, it's going to be within those contractual terms. The surety may have some people on, we can work that out with the surety company, make sure.
I approve withholding money, and then, but then there's an issue of who's going to complete, so maybe better just to let the surety cover all of it and give them the money, but make sure it's covered.
Yes, sir.
In the original contract, we withheld ten percent.
Okay.
So we're covered there.
And all the erosion and sediment controls are still in place out there?
Most of them, I believe they are, yes, ma'am.
Okay, can you check and make sure?
I'll go check.
Mr. Holder, did you have a question?
My question was answered.
Okay, anyone else with a question? If not, you have before you an indemnity agreement between the United States Surety Company and Henry County, and Mr. Alletta, this lies in your district, I'll look to you for a motion.
Do you approve?
Have a motion by Mr. Alletta, is there a second? Second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is under Public Works. We have a resolution requesting approval of a non-revenue street light at Lake Dow and State Route eighty-one. Our presenter is Terry McMichael, Public Works Division Director, exhibit number sixteen. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, and board members. We have had a request to place a street light at the intersection of Lake Dow and eighty-one, of course, that, as Rocky showed us yesterday, recently completed. We have gone out and looked at this. DOT recognized the importance of lighting the intersection in order to further improve operation and safety, so DOT requests that the agreement for a non-revenue street light at the intersection of Lake Dow and eighty-one be approved.
Does any board member have a question or comment about this item? If not, Mr. Stane, this lies in your district, and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve, is there a second? Second by Mr. Alletta, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting approval to abandon a portion of a public road known as Eagle Springs Drive, exhibit number seventeen.
Chairman, this one is, we're requesting abandonment of a portion of a public road known as Eagle Springs Drive. This request came from Stanley Burford of Ockerman and Company. Our request is to abandon a portion of Eagle Springs Drive. The reason for the request is for potential development of that site. Included in the package, you'll note that we have kind of a concept-type drawing of that. I would like to put this on the, up and try to explain it a little bit, might make it Little history, this road initially, before Eagles Landing was built, the GDOT section of Eagles Landing was built, Eagle Springs Drive ran into, to the road. When they come in and widen the road, they broke that connection, and when they did that, they put in a cul-de-sac, which you'll, which you'll see. So here was the road, and here's the cul-de-sac. In doing Georgia DOT, in order to accomplish that, if you look at the rectangular part of that, you'll see that was the original Henry County right-of-way. Everything to the left of that, there's a line that kind of goes midway through that cul-de-sac, everything to the left of that was property that was bought by Georgia DOT in order to accomplish putting in that cul-de-sac. So ironically, when we petitioned to, or when the petition came in to abandon the road, we requested a title search on this, because that was quite a discussion about who owned what out there, so we asked the applicant to get a survey done, and then to run title to ensure who owned what, so we could make sure we handled this properly. So the triangular part, and I'll kind of run my pen around that, which would be this portion here, is the portion that's owned by Henry County, and then this portion of property was actually bought under the project GDOT bought that. So GDOT, our Georgia Department of Transportation, is now in ownership, and that's identified as Track A, I believe. The portion that we will abandon, or we're asking for abandonment, is Track B. That's the portion of that right-of-way that still belongs to Henry County. Once the county abandons that, I think the next step would be for the applicant to get with Georgia DOT, go through their process of acquiring Track A or their portion of that, then I'm sure they would have to come back, the county would have to, after abandoning this road, the process, next step would probably be to declare that surplus, have it appraised, and then the county deal with the disposition of that property. Have, y'all have any questions, and I'm sure you may on this one? I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you have. I think the applicant of the abandonment is here as well.
Does any board member have a question?
I have a question from Tanya. Are you presently talking with DOT on this particular piece of property?
Yes, sir, I have been in communication. Sherry Matthews was initially involved in the communications to GDOT. The other portion that we're, and Terry, can you point out the other portion that's still currently owned by GDOT?
The, it's currently on your sheets, but it's everything this way.
The original design plan called for GDOT to return that property to the county, or to give that property to the county once it completed its improvement, and that has never been done. So in order to make this project complete, we need, I guess, as an attendant measure with what's being requested today, we need that additional property conveyed to the county. So we're in discussions with that. The original proposal from GDOT came with some conditions that would not allow the intent used to be completed for development purposes, so we're still in contact, and I just spoke with the GDOT attorney yesterday, as a matter of fact, had contact, so we're hopeful to work that out and come back before you at some later time for perhaps another abandonment, in order to make this a completed matter.
Well, we do know two state representatives here this morning, perhaps they can help us find our way through the GDOT maze to get to the right person to help accomplish that goal.
I'll talk to both of those gentlemen about that. Any and all help would be very appreciative.
That's what happens when you come to a commission meeting, we put you on the spot, sorry.
But it wasn't the original agreement that when the road was complete, that they would return it back to Henry County? Isn't that correct?
Yes, and they offered to do that with a reversionary interest, that, they made that offer to give it back to Henry County, but with a reversionary interest, that they would retain the right to get the property back from us if we ever abandoned the road. And so I had never seen that, and I'm not sure if Mr. McMichael had ever seen that in any of our conveyances, I'm just, no, I've never seen that. So discussion sort of came to a halt when the reversionary interest was put into the equation, and now we're trying to work through that, see what the basis for that was.
Yeah, possibly Representative Welch and Representative Davis could light a fire maybe under somebody at GDOT to get that moving, because this piece of property would result in jobs and revenue for Henry County, and it's kind of being held up by a little bit of red tape bureaucracy that maybe you guys could help us with.
Well, the other red tape is the little tagline that says it cannot be used for economic development. That's the big issue.
The reversionary interest clause in deeds, if I remember correctly, Terry, correct me if I'm wrong.
The way that's worded is that if GDOT, they will transfer that property to Henry County, as long as it's used, and they'll deed it to us, but in that deed, it'll have a reversion clause that in the event that property is no longer used for transportation purposes or road, then it reverts back to Georgia DOT. The reason Georgia DOT does that, very simply, is if it's going to be sold and somebody's going to get money for that property, since they invested in the initial acquisition of it, they want the money back. So that's kind of, that's a Terry McMichael opinion of why they do that, that's not a lawyer opinion.
Now, did they purchase that property initially, I mean, all of that property initially?
They purchased this section here only. This triangle, I mean, this rectangular. This triangle, I mean, this rectangular portion-
We already have.
-was the original road bed, uh, that is belong, that is Henry County right-of-way, currently today. You abandon the road, what you're doing today is just abandoning the public road on our portion of property. Once you abandon the road, you're still on the property. So then, you've still gotta deal with the transition of the property, uh, from Henry County-owned property, uh, you know, to, to dispersing of it. But, obviously, you gotta get rid of the public road first. Nobody wants to buy a piece of property with a public road still on it, 'cause if somebody bought it and we never abandoned the road, legally, somebody could go right into that property and say it's still a public road.
What possible use to Henry County right now?
The only purpose in that road right now, in that section, is it provides a cul-de-sac, and the reason we're supporting that is, we have looked into, when they do their concept plan, there is an opportunity for people to come in there and, and exit, so we're not creating a place where it just dead-ends with no opportunity to turn around. Uh, we have ran this, I believe, by, uh, Public Safety, and they're agreeable with what, how, the construction that is planned to be there, so it don't present any problems for public safety. That was our main concern for, obviously, for having cul-de-sacs and things like that, is keep people from turning around in private driveways and things like that. Well, the way this will be developed, I'll be accounted for, so we're, that's why we're in support of the abandonment. And certainly for the economic development, but we didn't wanna create a problem by abandoning the section of road, so that portion has been, uh, looked into.
Do you know how many jobs this is going to bring to the county, once that medical facility is completed?
I know, I've seen the ring, it's a beautiful facility.
But I think it's important to know-
How about Representative here, can you-
Uh, Mr. Talent's here.
Could you provide that information?
While he's coming up, Madam Chairman, I think it's important for the public to know that Henry County will not give away any property. The property will be appraised, and, and sold at its fair market value. There is never any intent on our part to give to any private entity any property. We're constrained, we cannot do that, and that's not our intention. So, it will be a public bidding process, it would be a, 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 a process that involves the appraisal of the property to be sold at its fair market price.
Uh, I don't know exactly how many jobs will come, but the, uh, we already have the building that we're proposing, about a forty thousand square foot, two-story medical office building.
Yes.
Uh, the physician groups that have already signed on, uh, to the project, um, two, two of them are already in the county, one is not in the county, but all of them will be, uh, greatly increasing the size of their space. One physician group will go from about eight thousand to about twenty thousand feet, uh, one will go from about seven thousand to ten thousand, and the other group is coming in, uh, that, uh, they'll be in about five thousand feet, and, um, all of these physician groups are, uh, really, um, uh, groups that send a lot of patients to the hospitals, so the hospital basically is giving us direction in who, who they want to see in there, and so those are the groups that we've, uh, gone after. So we, we only have about five thousand feet that's not spoken for at this point. And, um, the other thing too, is, in looking at comparable buildings in that area, uh, looking, looking at the assessed values and, and the, uh, tax revenues that are generated, I would expect this building to generate about seventy to seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, annually, in additional tax revenues.
Other than that, I think that, uh, these are, these are above-average paying jobs-
Absolutely.
-because they're the medical professions, so there's-
Well, I, I know that one of the groups has already had talked about bringing in, uh, additional physicians, um, and, uh, some PAs. As a matter of fact, one of the groups, uh, the largest group's coming in, right now, they, they don't have adequate space to accommodate all their patients, so some of those patients are going to some of their other clinics outside of Henry County. And, uh, and one other point too, is, earlier you were talking about the aesthetics of the landscaping and elsewhere thing, obviously, right now, the CVS is, uh, not that attractive, and so we've, uh, the, um, Homeland Association who, or I guess, I guess, who is it, Stockbridge, owns the, the, uh, the old BP site across the street, they're gonna be going in there doing some landscaping, they've been in, in contact with us, um, to coordinate what we're looking to do in landscaping, with what they're looking to do there, so it really improves the aesthetics of that, of that corridor there.
Can you state your name for the record?
Oh, my name is, uh, Mike Talent, and my company's Commercial Assets Group. Uh, we're based here in Stockbridge, uh, and we're gonna be jointly developing the project with Ackerman Medical, uh, and Ackerman has, uh, been an Atlanta, uh, real estate company for about forty years, and, and, uh, my company's been here in Stockbridge, uh, since nineteen ninety-six, so.
Madam Chair, I need to remind the Board, this is a public hearing.
Yes. All right, does any other Board member have a question or comment? Mr. Auletta?
I think what originally it seems is that there was gonna be a road to the north on this map, on this map here, showing it possibly would allow connection to the, uh, Medical Center. Is that still part of the thoughts, or?
Um, the way it's planned right now, where the, where we're looking at abandoning the road, um, yeah, it will, the layout will allow for traffic to come through there, come through the parking area, and a drive that will tie into an existing curb cut off Hospital Drive, uh, and so all that is gonna stay in place. So, in a previous meeting, uh, that we had with some of the county officials, and, uh, Lieutenant Flake was in the meeting, and, uh, his comment was, he felt like that what we're, we're proposing really increased, uh, the, uh, the capability of, uh, for the fire equipment to, to, uh, transition through there a lot better than the way it's set up right now.
So there's an added safety benefit as well-
That's right.
-flow of traffic, and, which is a problem in that area anyways. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, this is a public hearing on the road abandonment, and this time, I'm going to open it up for anyone who wishes to speak in regards to the abandonment of this portion of Eagle Springs Drive. No comment on that? So if there's, uh, no further comment from the Board, or questions from the Board, you have a resolution before you approving the abandonment of that portion, and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor, motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board.
Okay. Thank you, Terry.
Bob.
The next item on the agenda is approval of the Henry County Economic Incentives Program. Our presenter is Butch Sanders County Manager, and that's exhibit number eighteen.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board. I bring to you today a policy that has been a long time in the drafting and final authorship, and I think for a lot of good reasons. It's a very important policy for, uh, Henry County, for our Board, and for our economic development efforts. Uh, I think the, uh, the time allowed for, uh, plenty of input from all affected parties, and I think what we have is a, uh, very strong policy that will, uh, put us on more equal footing with our competition in the economic, uh, development business. I guess the, uh, the preamble, a couple of, uh, statements in the preamble probably set the tone and give everyone a pretty good idea of the goal of, of this incentives program. Uh, and I'll just read a couple of sentences. The goal is to ensure the competitiveness of the county in the attraction of new or expanded investment in the community, with the end result of implementation of this policy being the creation and/or the retention of significant economic activity that rewards the county at a level exceeding the cost of the incentives provided. Not only do we seek new investment, but we seek to support, uh, the people who've already invested in our county. And, it lays, I, I think the, um, three most important things this policy does are, one, it establishes a list of the, of possible incentives, everything from the waiver of , uh, plan review fees to bonds for title. It sets that out very clearly. Uh, it sets a, number two, it sets a threshold criteria for businesses to be targeted. Who are we looking for to come to Henry County? And finally, it sets very clear reporting requirements and accountability, uh, on the part of our, um, Economic Development Board. So I would, um, I'd certainly appreciate all your input, we even had, uh, the final public hearing, uh, uh, board meeting, uh, by the Board two weeks ago, and, um, I bring this policy to you for your consideration, and ask for your adoption.
Just wanna make a quick comment. The, everything that's contained within this policy has been a practice of Henry County for a number of years, and from my standpoint, I think it's important that we adopt the policy, because this simply says to businesses, "We're open to business, welcome to Henry County, and these are ways that we can work with you to help you come here and bring, um, jobs to our community," and, um, it, it, I think it will help us to have something like this in place. If we could get this on our website, and someone visits the website, they can click that on, and they can see that this, this is a policy that we support to attract new business and industry. It's been five years in the making, so I think it's probably been reviewed more than anything else we've reviewed, um, as a Board, so I'm, I'm certainly glad to see it brought before us this morning. Does any Board member have a question or a comment pertaining to this item? Mr. Auletta?
Um, first of all, I, I, tagging on what you were saying further, is that, uh, one of the things that I've heard of this, and it's been going on, is that one of the things the public seems to always be wanting is transparency in government, and if we've been operating without written guidelines, in my opinion, presenting something in a written format allows the public to know what's been going on, or will go on, as a result of doing it, as opposed to, the question that always comes up is, where were you allowed to do that, or how did you do that? Why did somebody get something over the other? Now the guidelines are set to allow citizens to understand under which terms and circumstances things are being done. The other is that, uh, I've, I just highlighted about a couple sections where the, um, Commission is not running and giving sole responsibilities to the, um, Development Authority, it's still in conjunction with the Board. Uh, Section two B, if, uh, number one, uh, the incentive plans are with the concurrence of the Chairman of the Board, in his or her absence, the Vice Chair, I'm reading quickly on some parts. Section three, uh, HCDA may adopt from time to time, subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners. Section four, each proposed project is subject to objective individual review and analysis to determine the benefits received, so it's not just done nilly-willy, it's got to have those analyses. Section five, the Board of Commissioners may, in its sole discretion, submit annual financial guideline. And Section six, such waiver of a development fee in whole or part must be approved by the Board of Commissioners. So, there are various sections in here providing certain guidelines for incentives, but at the same time, as it, as I said, the Board of Commissioners is tagged very well, uh, with, joined very well with the HCDA to, um, to those things that are provided. Thank you.
Mr. Holder?
Just a question, Butch, is, is this the same as the, uh, draft copy, the yellow copy that we were given, uh, initially?
It is, that was discussed at the hearing two weeks ago, meeting two weeks ago.
Same thing, no, no changes.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? All right, if not, you have before you a resolution to adopt Henry County's Economic Incentives Program, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a resolution requesting approval of the proposed district map for the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education to be submitted to the General Assembly, it's exhibit number nineteen. And our presenter is, uh, Latonya Wiley County Attorney. Good morning.
Good morning, thank you, Madam Chairman, Member of the Board. There is, uh, before you a resolution, um, requesting approval of the proposed map that's before you, and shown on the overhead, uh, for the new redistricting lines for the five member districts of the Commissioners for Henry County, which will also correspond with the Board of Education member districts. We have previously had a public hearing on this matter, um, a couple of weeks ago, there was a joint meeting with the Board of Education on June seventh, two thousand and eleven, when, um, an iteration of this particular map, as well as another map, was presented, and I won't go into the, all of the legal principles again, which were discussed in both of those previous meetings, but before you now is a resolution to approve this map for submission to the Georgia General Assembly, and it's special session that will be held on August fifteenth, um, for that body to approve, um, this map, and then to authorize the county to send to the Department of Justice for a pre-clearance. I know that we have two such representatives, as the Chairman noted today here this morning, I'm not sure if either, or both of them would like to come up to speak on this map. Um, this map, of course, was, uh, produced with, um, and all of the maps that have been produced to date and reviewed, were done with the assistance of a consultant who had more than twenty years of experience in the redistricting area. We also had the assistance of the, uh, Reaportment Office at the State Capitol, um, that helped in, in drafting this, and with the joint efforts of the Board of Education, um, this particular map has come to fruition to get to this point. Um, it's my understanding that the Board of Education will be considering adopting the same map either tonight or sometime this week, and we would ask that, um, the map be approved. This has not been advertised as a public hearing, but it's my understanding from the county clerk, there, there were some people who signed up to speak on this, Madam Chair, so I would ask if you would, and given the gravity of this particular, um, proposal, allow such opportunity for public comment at this time, as opposed at the end of the public meeting, um, because there may be some issues that the Board may want to address, or that I may be able to answer or address.
We did have, um, one citizen that signed up to speak on this particular item, and I know there probably will be others that certainly are free to come up and speak, but I'll ask Ms. Carlotta Harold of two sixty-one Hunting Court, Jonesboro, to come up at this Good morning.
Good morning. I was here at the last commission meeting on July the nineteenth, and, um, several of us from the Spivey community kinda voiced our opinion of, um, disapproval of, um, the current map that you, that the Board will be voting on today. Many of us in the community believe that the current map will have a retrogressive effect to Commission Districts two and four, as well as the School Board District four. Under Section five of the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five, uh, this map will be in violation of reducing minority votes, uh, effective exercise of electoral franchise. This map will have a diminishing effect of the ability of any citizen of the United States because of race, color, or membership in a language minority group, as defined in the Act, to elect their preferred candidate of choice. The ability of such citizens to elect their preferred candidate of choice is protected by the nineteen sixty-five Voting Rights Act. A map that, um, would require significantly greater overall population deviation is not considered a reasonable alternative. I would be very disappointed if, um, the Board, uh, supported this map, and I'm sure the citizens of the community, uh, will remember, uh, if such. I have a letter from, uh, one of the constituents, Ms. Marilyn Flynn, she's a retired speech and language, uh, pathol, uh, pathologist, she lives at five twenty-one Country Club Drive, uh, District four, Henry County, Stockbridge, Georgia. In her letter, she, um, and she has sent this letter to Mr. Bowman, who is her current Commission District, uh, Representative. I oppose, object to the opposed district lines for the five districts in Henry County. This is not only racially, racially gerrymandering for the purpose of isolating the black vote, the lines have been clearly drawn to shift Republican and Democratic votes to ensure the election of Republican incumbents. I believe that these are violations of the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five. I call your attention to the transfer of the properties in the western section of the existing portion of District four, and the northern portion of District two, into District five. There is a larger concentration of black residents in this area, and I suspect that they, I suspect they have been moved to reduce their voting strength in Districts Two and Four. I believe this is racial gerrymandering. The United States Supreme Court in Miller versus Johnson, 515 U.S. 900, 1995 overturned a 1992 congressional redistricting plan, which has, which had created minority-majority districts in Georgia as unconstitutionally gerrymandering. They have moved the predominantly white residents in the homes of Republican, and the home of a Republican state representative out of District Five into District Four. This white Republican state representative was involved in drawing the district lines. A black commissioner was elected to the Board of Commission in District Five this past year. The 21-year-old son of the state representative was elected to school board for District Five in 2010 election. Since he lives with his parents, the change would move the board member out of the predominantly black district which he was elected to represent. The school board member from District Four is black and has served on the school board for eight years. He has established an excellent rapport with the schools in District Four and has, has been an outstanding advocate for the disadvantage in our community. He is the only black member of the school board and the only board member most likely to champion the minority children in our schools. Those who drew this, those who drew the district lines have protected the legislature's son by moving the black District Four representatives' homes into District Five. I am particularly concerned because, as an advocate for disadvantage in our schools, it has been my experience that our Republican legislature has not supported preschool and elementary education and much less early learning services for the disadvantage. I believe the proposed district lines are in violation of the Voting Rights Act of 1965 and should be redrawn. I can attest to the fact that our elected state representative does not represent all of his constituents. I am white like him, but I am an educator who advocates for the children he would rather ignore. Sincerely, Marilyn Flynn, EDD, retired speech and language pathologist, 521 Country Club Drive. Ms. Flynn could not be here today because she had surgery this week at Henry Medical. She had asked me to come and read her letter before the board. If the board votes and support this map, the community will write to our legislators and ask them not to support this, and if it, if it is passed by the General Assembly, then we will go to the Justice Department. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on the redistricting issue? If you would, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Jane Rutledge, 858 Honey Creek Road, McDonough, 30252. Is this a requirement that the county must adhere to?
We must redistrict because of the census numbers that came out of the 2010 census. You have to rebalance your population. We had one district with 50,000 residents and another district with 32. So it's, there's been such a large shift in the population. Each district must have a balance of about 40,000 citizens per district for fair representation. So yes, we had to redistrict.
So this is mandated by the federal census?
Yes.
Is there a ratio that is dictated to how the lines are drawn?
Ms. Wiley, if you would, you could probably answer these questions better because you've been working with the consultant on this.
What do you mean ratio? Can you tell me what you, the law requires a deviation of no more than 10% in the terms of the number of population within each district. So there can't be more, can't be more than a 10% deviation between the number of persons in the lowest populated district and the most heavily populated district.
Well, I have to concur with the lady who just spoke, having lived here all of my life and seeing the demographic changes. I don't think that any person should be subjected to a disadvantage as far as their voting rights, their education, or access to any handicap things. So that's what I didn't understand as to why we would be voting on something that could possibly be in noncompliance with what she just referred.
And I, and I think I can respond to your question as well as the earlier speakers. When, when the map is approved and sent to the Justice Department, the Justice Department will review this map to make certain that it complies with the one-person, one-vote standard under the United States Constitution, as well as the Federal Voting Rights Act. We do not agree that this map is in violation of those, of that. Obviously, we wouldn't have made this proposal. But there is a separate review process by the Department of Justice, and it will be open to anyone who wants to avail themselves of that process and contact them to speak to them, as, as the earlier speaker alluded to doing. So there will be that independent review process. The county will have to make a showing that it is in compliance, and we believe we can make that showing. But if, in, in, in the event that we do not, then it will come back for a new map to be redrawn. So there is a review process. Obviously, we will not intentionally knowingly submit anything that was in violation of that.
Okay.
And also, too, I think there was a discussion. Did you have another question?
No. I just, I can say I concur with what the lady just read from the lady who was in the hospital that couldn't be here. And I didn't understand what process we were in here, if we were voting on something that would actually
Be violated.
Put us into a violation.
That's right. And it will be reviewed, and once the Justice Department completes its review, it will issue a letter of preclearance to the county, as it has done with respect to other things we've submitted, and say the map is appropriate and we don't find any violations of the law. So if, there will be a, a public acknowledgement, acknowledgement that it is in compliance. So the voters will know. In the event that the opposite result happens, then, of course, we'll be back here again to, to start this process again.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the commission. It's my pleasure to be here for this today.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Steve Davis. I'm a state representative for 109th District, which incorporates about half of Henry County from portions of all five Commission Districts, from the Kellytown, Rockdale, Newton County lines, all the way to Clayton County line near Nash Farm, the cities of Hampton. But basically, I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to, to discuss this, and this is, this is your decision, and you'll send it, send it up to us as a recommendation for the, the General Assembly and the members of this delegation, all nine of us, to, to pass on behalf of your, your wishes. Now, I, I believe that this map is, is very right. It is the closest in the deviations of any of the versions. It beats all of the Justice Department's recommendations and requirements. And I, I think it's also fair, and it, it addresses communities of interest. In the letter that was just read, which is the first time I've heard it, nor has anyone called me with that, those, those issues, I, I will state this. There's been numerous versions of this map, okay? That's come in all different kinds of variations and deviations throughout it. And every single one of those maps have placed Board Member Davis in a different district than District Five, regardless of who drew the map. So he was in District Three, he was in District Four, but he's, he's been in, out of District Five because of his geographic location in every version. So don't let that be a distraction to you. He is an elected official. He is duly elected. He got elected in District Five. And as I state, this meets all of the requirements of the department, including racial demographics, population demographics. The deviations are plus or minus 1%, which is much, much tighter than either the 6% or the 8% version that was previously addressed to the commission. But, you know, I've, I've worked on, on many maps at this point, you know? I'm getting to, close to our special session when we're going to also do the State House, State Senate, Congressional maps. I worked as the Chair of the ARC delegation to do the citizen map. It's been a, I've worked with each of the members here, including Commissioner Holmes and Commissioner Bowman, you know, trying to, to offer my advice and my expertise and what I've done downtown, and hopefully that has helped. And, you know, I just, I encourage you to take a good look at the map and, and, and vote your conscience. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? All right. Ms. Wiley, did you have any other comments that you would like to add?
Just a couple. I mean, District Two was the largest and the most heavily populated district following the 2010 census results. And so there were a number of citizens that had to be moved, some 10,000 citizens that had to be moved outside of District Two. They, we went upward, or it was determined by, in various iterations of this map, to go upward and move those into District Five, because if you move southerly towards District One, there just aren't enough people there. It's, it's a, not heavily populated. And so the, in order to get the people to move, to be moved out of District Two, in order to bring District Two into balance with the other districts, you had to move to the north. I think that was something that was determined by both the state legislative reapportionment office that Representative Davis spoke to, as well as Ms. Maggers, the independent consultant that the county hired. And I'll also state that in looking at the, in order to address one of the comments concerning, I guess fracturing or diluting the black vote, if you take a look at by district, what 2010 census results show by district, this map does not have that purpose or effect. District One, in the, currently, has a population percentage of all apart black, 32.95%. And in this proposed map, it's 31.81%. District Two has a population of 40.36%, and in this particular map, it has 36.18%. District Three, 31.66%, and in the proposed map, 30.89%. District Four currently has 43.73%, and in this particular map, that's proposed, 40.04%. District Five, 46.05%, and this particular map, 52.86%. So there has not been a huge disparity in the before and after numbers as it pertains to all the percent, black percentages, which is what the Justice Department will be looking at, if we just compare those numbers. So with that, Madam Chair, there's a resolution that I prepared for the board's consideration, outlining the things we've talked about previously and the things we've talked about today, and would ask that the board entertain a motion to submit this map to the legislative delegation representing Henry County.
Does any board member care to, to submit a, a motion on the map?
I'd like to approve it.
Have a motion by Mr. Bowman? Is there a second?
Comment.
Okay, yeah, a second by Mr. Aletta, and, and he would like to make a comment.
Yes. First of all, most of the discussions surrounding the concerns with the map seem to all center around District Two. I haven't been vocal because, quite frankly, no matter what map I've seen, there was going to be a movement of 10,000 citizens from District Two somewhere. And the issue of where, then, from my standpoint, was to rely on the experts, which I certainly am not, to make sure that it's done fairly and no one's disenfranchised. To the extent that it is our legal opinion and that we have not violated and feel comfortable sending this to the powers that we need to and can stand on it, you know, even if it is challenged, at least we should be doing the correct thing, which is to make sure we're not disenfranchising anybody by what we're doing, at least with that clear conscience. You know, I've campaigned in this area to win this seat. I've been honored to work with the citizens in the district in that area quite a bit, quite frankly, in the past six, six months on various issues. And I really appreciate the support that I've received from the citizens to get into office and working with them the past six, seven months. This is not an issue for me of wanting to say bye-bye, I don't want you, or whatever else, no matter what the race or anything else is. It's a matter for me and to be vocal about it, to say it's not a matter of wanting anything in particular. It's the fact that the, the map has to be redrawn and 10,000 citizens in my district have to go somewhere. And again, from my perspective, the key thing for me is that we, as a county, in preparing this and approving it, are doing exactly that, and as being fair and not disenfranchising anyone, as long as that is the position and, and opinion. I just wanted to express it that way. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further comments? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries four, zero, uh, four, one, zero, with Mr. Holder in opposition. And moving on to the approval of the minutes, we have July 13th and also July 19th. Other than grammatical corrections, are there any additions that need to be made to the minutes? Okay? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
motion move.
Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Mr. County Manager, do you have anything for public session? Ms. County Attorney?
No. Our upcoming meetings and events, Monday, August the 15th at 9:00 a.m., we have a regular meeting. Tuesday, August 16th, that meeting has been canceled. Friday, September the 2nd, all county offices will be closed for furlough day. Monday, September the 5th, all county offices will be closed in observance of Labor Day. Tuesday, September the 6th at 9:00 a.m., we have a regular meeting. We do have a need for an executive session this morning, so I need a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purposes of potential pending litigation, personnel matters, or land acquisition.
motion move.
Motion by Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. I need a motion to reconvene into public session.
motion move.
Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries four, zero. I need a motion for approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries four, zero. At this time, I believe, Mr. Aletta, we need to amend the agenda out of public necessity and add an item to vote on.
Yes, Madam Chair, we'll amend the agenda. To approve a contract addendum for the acquisition of Terra Field, extending the closing date from August 3rd, 2011, to August 19th, 2011.
We have a motion, and I need a second. Second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries four, zero. Mr. Bowman, you have a need to amend the agenda and add an item.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve an agreement regarding the reconstruction of the building department into the Department of Plan Review and Compliance, using existing county employees only with no new hires.
And we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Aletta, all in favor. Motion carries four, zero. If there's no further business to come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm, Mr. Holmes has some comments you want to make. I apologize for that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just felt that I need to respond to comments that were made yesterday, yesterday by a gentleman that came to the commission meeting and spoke out regarding myself, as well as my youth foundation. Number one, I've only met that gentleman one time, that was within the last two or three weeks. He was not part of my organization, but he was here in attendance with a person, my former, the former athletic director of my organization. former, the former athletic director of my organization. He mentioned information, or he mentioned information about me not, or saying that they can't use the field. I want to confirm that I never said that. That can be corroborated, corroborated by the county attorney, as well as the county manager. She's gotten all the email communication. He also mentioned that my nonprofit organization in Minnesota, he couldn't find it on the internet. I just wanted to show you that I did have a nonprofit organization called Universal Sports Incorporated. It was recognized and awarded by the Minnesota Vikings as a grassroots organization that made a difference in the community. He mentioned that I didn't have, I wasn't incorporated in the state of Georgia as a nonprofit incorporation. So, I just wanted to show the people of Henry County that we are incorporated, we do have bylaws, and we also have a board of direction, board of directors. With regards to the separation, the reason why there was a separation, because there became, you know, we were going in different directions. My organization is a nonprofit organization. We are not in business to make money, we not, we are not in business to use county dollars to support the organization. We will be run by fees and also fundraising activities. I have a belief that this organization will help keep kids off the street, as well as keep kids from going in the direction of a life of crime. That is the reason why I set this organization up. I've been doing this for years now, and I believe that if it wasn't for organizations like this, when I was a youth, that I wouldn't be here today. Lastly, with regards to the separation, there was a bounced check on the 23rd of July that was not communicated to me. I didn't realize that there was a bounced check out of my organization till I heard from a local vendor, and, and I became severely concerned about that. After I ended the relationship last Friday, my account was closed with a balance of $2,300. So, I just wanted to communicate everything to the community. We are a reputable organization, we are here to help the kids, and I want to thank the Chair for allowing me to, to speak to you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. If there's no further business to come before the Board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to move.
Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries 4-0. We stand adjourned.